One second, okay?
Says live.
One second, okay?
Says live.
We are live.
Good, go. Okay, good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for April tenth, twenty twenty-three. I remain remind the anyone attending other than the BSA, no public testimony during there's no public testimony permitted during the review session. You will have your opportunity when it is a public hearing. The first item up is adjournments. Oh, do I do that again?
Yes.
All right. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for April tenth, twenty twenty-three. I remind the public that no public testimony is permitted during the review session. The first items up are adjournments. Item number one, eight twenty sixty-seven BZ forty-one Barker Street Staten Island. Item number two, twenty nineteen one ninety-eight forty dash seventeen twenty-eight Avenue Queens. And item number three, twenty twenty-one seventy-one BZ one oh five thirty-one seventy-six Street Queens. The following is postponements. Items number item number four, twenty twenty-two twenty-eight A through twenty twenty-two thirty-eight A thirty A, sorry. Fifteen seventeen nineteen Bedell Street Staten Island. The following are withdrawals. Item number five, twenty twenty-one sixteen BZ three oh two West one hundred twenty-eight Street Manhattan.
Okay, um, make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chibeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Application has been withdrawn. Item number six, twenty twenty-two eighty-two BZ thirteen oh eight Edward L. Grant Highway in the Bronx.
Okay, motion to withdraw.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chibeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Thank you. Application has been withdrawn. Decision items. Item number seven, two forty-five thirty-two BZ one twenty-three oh five hundred first Avenue Queens.
Hey, um, the applicant has submitted photos of improvements made to the site. Um, I'm satisfied with it. Um, and commissioners, are you all satisfied with the submission? Everybody's nodding in agreement. So I make a motion to approve and I also would ask that our resolution uh refers to the operational plan. So motion to approve.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chibeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number eight, two not two thirty-nine oh two BZ one ten Waverly Place, Manhattan.
All right, um, the applicant has submitted photos um of the shed um that has been removed and also um associated wires uh were also removed. Um, any other, do commissioners have any questions or comments? Are you satisfied with the submission? Everybody is nodding in agreement. Yes, so I make a motion to approve.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chibeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number nine, two forty-five oh three BZ one sixty dash eleven Willetts Point Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, um, we received a letter that provided uh that was provided by the applicant confirming the menu board will contain an A B C and construction timeline also has been provided. And uh and um the applicant states that uh when all the work is done, the um a sign will be posted in the drive-through asking customers to um lower their volume. Um, so it does not disrupt uh or disturb the neighbors. I don't have any other comments. I'm satisfied with it. Commissioners, are you all satisfied with the? Everybody?
Yeah, I'm I'm satisfied with it, but we need a condition to say that the A B C will be kept on all the time.
Okay. All right, so I make a motion to approve with condition that A B C will be uh kept open on will be turned on at all the time.
Okay, uh so the motion to approve. Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chibeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number ten, twenty eighteen fifty-one BZ eleven dash oh one Plainview Avenue, Queens.
Okay, there was no submission. Um, the applicant requested a four-year extension from December twenty twenty-three. Commissioners, you're okay with that? Um, everybody's in agreement, so make a motion to approve.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chibeta?
Aye.
Commiss- Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number eleven, twenty nineteen forty BZ one seventy-five one seventy-nine East one East Seventy-third Street, Manhattan.
I just wanna, I recu-
Excuse me? You're accusing, okay.
Sorry, can you read out the?
What twenty nineteen forty B-
Yep, yep.
Forty BZ one seventy-five one seventy-nine East Seventy-third?
Oh, wait a minute, hold on a second. Okay, I'm I'm my my mistake, my mistake. What was the prior uh prior action?
Uh, two twenty eighteen fifty-one BZ eleven oh one Plainview, which is voted on.
You know what? My apologies. My sincere apologies. I don't even have it on my um list of reviews. I read out, I read out one seventy-five, one seventy-nine East Seventy-third Street as a condition.
Which one you gonna have, Chair?
Can we mute Binroy?
Chair?
Yeah.
Which one you gonna have? The Plainview?
I don't have Plainview.
Okay, I can read it. I have it.
Okay. I unfortunately do not have it on my list. I'm sorry, my apologies.
It was, it was no submission required as well.
Can we, I'm sorry, could we call Commissioner Yu back, please, if we're not discussing this issue?
Can you please return? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, um, do you want me to recall it?
Yes.
And you worry about recall it?
Yes.
Okay, okay, we're recalling item number ten, twenty eighteen fifty-one BZ eleven oh one Plainview Avenue, Queens.
Okay. Um, there were no submission requirements?
Right.
Okay, uh, all right, so make a motion to approve.
Okay, Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Chibeta, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Application is granted. Now, um, item number eleven, twenty nineteen forty BZ one seventy-five East Seventy-ninth Street. I recu-
Okay, my sincere apologies again. Um, on this one, there were no submissions requirement and on this one, the applicant requested an extension from December twenty twenty-three.
This is the four-year.
Yeah, this is the four-year extension. So make a motion to approve.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chibeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu, oh, Commissioner Yu abstained. Application has been granted.
She's recused, not abstaining.
Sorry, recused. Thank you for the correction, sir.
You are.
Item number nine, twelve, twenty twenty-two thirteen A ninety-seven Industrial Loop Staten Island.
Hey, we received a letter of no objection from fire department. And the applicant has revised the site site plan. The site plan shows a minimum a five-foot wide sidewalk that is proposed along the build uh site frontage uh along industrial loop. I was satisfied with the submission. Any um are you all agreement? Any questions or comments? Everybody's in agreement, so make a motion to approve.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chibeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Continued hearing items on the SOC calendar. Item number thirteen, one twenty-nine ninety-seven BZ one fifty, sorry, one fifty sixty-five Cross Island and Expressway Queens. Cross Island Parkway, sorry, Queens.
The initial hearing was held on October fourth and uh two um two sets of revised documents were provided in response to the comments raised. One was a submission date of uh has a submission date stamped um as of three sixteen, the other one is four three. So I just want to make sure commissioners, you reviewed the latest one with regards to the plans. Um, the compliance uh charts, um, the compliance chart has been provided. Uh, plan has been revised to include the existing site area drain. Photos and videos were also provided um of the drainage uh on the side. Uh signage analysis has also been revised. Um, however, um, I would say that the plans um do not show the location of the vacuum machines, which are located along Cross Island Parkway. Also, the proof of continuous use has not been provided. Uh, we had asked that the applicant use the Google Street View for that. Now, and I think that should be a pretty easy submission and I have gone by that site many times over the years and I have seen it in full operation. So um I I don't have an issue with it, but just for the record, the applicant should provide a proof of continuous uh use photos. Um, I would, um, I don't have any other comments on this. Um, I'm satisfied with it, but the questions that we are asked, I'm asking for, just a couple of corrections can be done. Um, I mean, I I would recommend closing it and the applicant can make those submissions. Uh, Vice Chair Chibeta?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I also would recommend closing it and uh oh leaving it open for those following submissions that you requested. Nothing further from me.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Otley Brown?
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ashetta?
Thank you, Chair. I uh saw the video and the photos for the floor drain. I wanna thank them for that, especially they did something smart. They took them during, I believe, an event or maybe um they just spilled water there. So I'm fine with these uh photos and videos. And I'm fine also with closing the case and leaving the record open for the submission of the revised plans.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Yu?
No further comments.
Thank you. Okay, um, next case?
Item number, new cases on the SOC calendar. Item number fourteen, two ninety-five five seven BZ one fifty one forty-six dash fifteen Union Turnpike, Queens.
Okay, we have received, um, we have uh proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing. Um, community board, um, we have not received um a recommendation from community board yet. Um, this is an application for an extension of term for an existing gasoline service station and a repair facility at the subject site. Um, a proof of continuous use has not been provided. The prior extended, the last extension expired on August seventh, twenty twenty-one. Um, so a proof of continuous use needs to be provided. A compliance chart was not provided. The applicant needs to provide uh photos of the interior of the site uh conditions and along the lot line. Um, the applicant is proposing an extension of term. No changes proposed uh with regards to the operation on the site or any of the other prior conditions. Uh, however, I do want some clarification with regards to the hours hours of operations for uh the vacuum machine. Uh, does the vacuum machine shut off at uh nine P uh from nine P M to seven P M? Um, is there a signage um that alerts customer customers of the hours? If so, um provide photos of that signage. I I read that in one of the resolution that the vacuum machine shall be shut off from nine P M to uh, I think it should be from nine P M to seven A M. Um, I have it in my notes as um um as P M. That doesn't make sense. I think it would be seven P M, yeah, seven A M.
Uh, Director Castanta has his hand up.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, ma'am, Chair, I'm sorry. Uh, we we had learned that not on this site but another site that I think there are state requirements to the availability of the air pumps, so I think it would be-
I'm not talking about air pumps. I'm talking about vacuum machine.
Apologies, my apologies. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so I just kind of want to know what the hours of operations are. Um, uh I read it in the resolution, so if the applicant can confirm it and indicate if there is a signage that alerts the customers that they and that it shuts off uh between those hours. Um, applicant needs to provide a photo of the trash enclosure. Um, not sure if it is enclosed. Um, landscaping uh from the photos provided, it seems the landscaping along the one of the lot lines, it's in good condition. I couldn't confirm that for the residential portion. Hmm, and the applicant should uh add a note to the lighting plan that all lighting sources that are located on the lot line adjacent to residential use shall be shielded from direct view and pointed down and away from residences to minimize any adverse effect on surrounding residences. Um, the applicant needs to provide a signage analysis per street frontage. Uh, the signage analysis on the plan only includes illuminated signs. Now, and I what I, my question is, are there non-illuminated signs and the existing illuminated sign uh facing one forty-seventh Street exceeds fifty square foot per zoning resolution section thirty-two dash six forty-two? Um, overall, the site seems to be in good conditions, uh in good condition. There is graffiti on the wall along the rear of the lot line. Um, but um, those are just my comments. Uh, Vice Chair Chibeta?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, you you've mentioned all my comments. I have nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Otley Brown?
I noticed in the Google Street View photos that there is a P O D storage container to the side of the store that isn't on the plans, that they should probably remove unsightly. I agree with you about the signage, but they need to break it out for frontage. And the back wall, my question was, is this owned by them? Because like you said, the the side of the wall facing the parking lot is full of graffiti, and if it is owned by by this applicant, they should just paint it. And there is an ice machine in front of the store and merchandise outside of the store that should be indoors. That's all.
That's a good point. Yeah, I it wasn't clear to me who owned that, who had uh the responsibility of maintaining that wall. Um, and who's responsible therefore it is to remove the graffiti also. And what is the last one you mentioned? There was a last point you mentioned.
There's an ice machine in front of the store and merchandise right outside of the store that should be put indoors and the ice machine should be put on the plans.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner uh Shatta.
Thank you, Chair. I share the comment regarding the compliance. Uh, I do have question on the drainage, how it's gonna be handled. Um, on site, I didn't see pictures for uh floor drains. Um, I need them to specify the term in the statement of facts. And uh I'm not sure if this needs a waiver for the rules. I wasn't sure about the date it was filed. And finally, uh regarding the Lumen spread note, there is no Lumen spread diagram actually submitted, so if they can just add this to the site plan, that would be helpful. But I I haven't, I would say I haven't seen a Lumen spread diagram submitted.
Yeah, I think the prior board also did not, a prior grant um a proof plan also did not have a Lumen spread.
Yeah. Um. I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's needed. I'm I what I'm saying is it's not needed, but I, because you mentioned, Chair, that you need to add a note to the Lumen diagram.
It's not, that's right. It's not, I don't believe it is needed partly because um it's fronting on two streets and then there's a commercial use on the other side, which is a fully built to the lot line. And um behind it is a residential use which has a parking uh
Yes.
is uses the side yard and it's a pretty wide side yard which is used for parking. So I did not think a Lumen study was needed, but just a note can be on the site plan, which uh basically alerts them that that we just be respectful of the residential neighbors uh along the residential lot line and keep the Lumen count to to reasonable uh uh level.
It's a disclaimer, just in case in the future the neighbor complains, yeah.
Right, it's a disclaimer, right. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Yu?
Thank you. I have no further comments.
Okay, thank you. Next case, please?
Oh, happened here. Item number fifteen, four ninety-eight eighty-three BZ twenty-one thirty-one Highland Boulevard Staten Island.
Okay, uh, this is an extension of time, so a proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing is not required. Um, as I mentioned, this is an extension of time to complete construction of a previously approved accessory parking um that uh stay uh a previously approved accessory parking uh requirement um that expired on January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three on the subject lot. Um, the applicant states the reason for the delay, although the demolition ha- was filed and uh due to um the COVID pandemic, um, the construction cost uh did not get carried through, but since then it has been, uh it has taken place, site is now vacant. Uh, and uh but however, there are financial issues the applicant is trying to negotiate and uh address. Um, I would like the applicant to provide some kind of a rough idea of the timeline as to the next steps. I recognize that this is the first time the applicant is requesting um an extension. Uh, and uh the demolition was in response to some of the E C P violations that the applicant has received, so I am um I am okay to ground uh an extension. I do, as I said, would like the applicant to clarify um as to some estimated timeline. Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Chibeta?
Uh, thank you, Chair. So I was too sympathetic uh to this applicant. They um received their permit in December sixteenth of twenty nineteen. Uh, so um they shut the uh the COVID nineteen, did shut down construction. Uh, I do wanna know if um I understand that they have current finance uh difficulties financing the project, but is like, like you stated, you wanted a timeline. I'd like to know what is the perspective of financing at this point? And uh I have no further questions besides that.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Otley Brown?
Um, they said the property is for sale. And my question is, will that affect what will be built on the adjacent lot? And will that affect the parking requirement and then the layout of this parking lot?
Uh, I I missed that, okay. Well, if it does, then it comes back again. So, okay, the applicant can clarify that.
Uh, Mr. Oh, Executive Director has his hand up, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes.
Um, I, Commissioner Otley Brown, uh, point, I I just wanted to clarify again that if I recall correctly, the the allowance of that parking uh on in the residential.
Yes.
Listen, in an effort to satisfy parking requirement, but rather an amenity, um because the building is uh categorized as a replacement in kind uh because of Sandy, of the hurricane situation. So again, I just wanted to put into perspective that you know, the the variance on the parking lot in the residential district uh was an amenity to the building and not in an effort to satisfy its parking requirement, but the applicant could maybe better speak to that.
Okay.
Okay, I, you know, I I don't know to what extent um how much variation one can have on an as-of-right plan for the portion where the commercial use is permitted as of right. So I I was, the way I read Commissioner Otley Brown's question was will there be any change in the site plan that may affect the location of the parking space that affects the area where the variance was granted? And would it increase or decrease on um the entrance and the exits would vary? Um, but the applicant can clarify about that. Thank you, thank you. Uh, Mr. Castanza. Um, yes, uh, Commissioner Shatta?
Thank you, Chair. The only comment I um would add is um, first of all, I agree on the need for a timeline. The only thing I noticed is that we don't, we haven't received, or I didn't see again, I didn't see uh plans, not the previously approved. The only set we got is the previously approved one, and typically we get the previously approved and we get the the new, which is supposed to be the same as the previously approved. And we get some sort of a confirmation in the statement of fact that there is no change proposed to the plans. I I haven't-
Uh, sorry, I I I don't, finish your side statement.
So I I I didn't, I didn't see that. I didn't see that confirmation that there is no change proposed, nor a fresh set of plans.
Okay.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Shatta, if I could just clarify, this is just for an extension of time.
We don't require-
we don't require a new set because we wouldn't be approving a set of plans under this application.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You just need to see a buy? You just need the certificate of inspection of compliance, Commissioner? Is that what you want?
There is, there is nothing to inspect, I believe, just a confirmation in the statement, a sentence in the statement of fact saying that there is no changes proposed to the plans. That would be enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, but as uh, you know, which is what I was gonna state, uh, as Mr. Castanza pointed out, we're not approving any plan. We're just granting an extension of time. So whatever was the prior approved plan said is what stays uh in motion until and unless the applicant recommend uh comes before us to revise and modify the plan.
I thought I have, I have seen similar projects come up.
There are situations, we have seen it, but in those cases, they are also requesting an amendment. No, sometimes, um, so it would be an amendment and an extension of time, but um I think like you're referring to one of Mr. Goldstein's cases, which is an extension of time, but they were also modifying a couple of layouts and other things. And um so we kind of amended. There are few times that has happened, but um it's not a requirement.
Maybe.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Executive Director Castanza. Uh, Commissioner Yu?
Thank you, Chair. I have no further comments.
Okay.
Okay, item number sixteen, one oh six seventy-six BZ one twenty-nine oh one North Conduit Avenue, Queens.
I'm just looking at the drawings, just give me a second. We have received proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing. Um, we have not received the community board vote on this. This is an application for an extension of term and a waiver of board's rule for a continued um continuous use of an um automotive service station with an accessory convenience store on the subject site and a waiver of board's rule. Um, the uh, the last extension that was granted expired in uh July of twenty-eleven. So the applicant needs to provide a proof of continuous use since twenty-eleven. Needs to provide a compliance chart of all prior conditions. Now, applicant needs to indicate, uh though the extension, it's just an extension of term and nothing is proposed to be changed, the applicant in its statement needs to clarify what is the uh existing hours of operation. Um, provide photos of the enclosure, trash enclosure, the site condition, interior site function. And uh with regards to the landscaping, as I noticed from the, some of the photos, there are gaps in the landscaping along the rear lot line behind the convenience store. Um, the signage uh based on what has been provided seems to comply with C-one zoning district. Um, and while the site does seem to be in good condition, the applicant needs to provide an interior site photos, lot line conditions. Um, and uh Um and uh those are my comments. Um Vice Chair Shabata.
Uh thank you, um I too noticed, I didn't see the uh community board recommendation, but it was my understanding that they met last Tuesday, so if the applicant can uh speak to that, that'd be great. Um I also did notice some graffiti on the side of the uh of the of uh on 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 one side of the property, and I asked that that be cleaned up if it hasn't been already. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Um Commissioner Artley Brown?
As regards the proof of continuous use that they did not submit, it would be very easy for them to submit their Google Street oh uh street view photos because they actually have photos dating from September twenty eleven right through to November twenty twenty two. And so that will provide all of the background information that we need to know that shows that the site is in operation and always has been.
Great, thank you for making the task so easy. Um, all right, thank you. Um Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you Chair, I agree with the comments regarding the need for uh addressing the compliance with previous grants. Uh and 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 also um I saw that there is no lighting plan submitted, although the previously approved plans contain uh one. So we have, I believe residential properties along the northern property line and lighting along these property lines need to be looked at, so I'm asking them to submit a plan for the lighting. Thank you.
And they can add a note that we typically ask every applicant to provide? Thank you. Um Commissioner Yun?
Uh thank you, sorry, I'm just looking, they have a Lumen, I thought I saw a lighting plan.
I I I I didn't hear what you said, so can you repeat it?
Sorry, I guess, I think, I I did see a lighting plan, I was just double checking uh in the previously approved plans, but.
Yeah, yes, it's in the pre- previously approved plans, Commissioner, yeah.
Uh I think Commissioner is saying nothing has been submitted as part of the proposed submission.
The proposed is three pages, the first page is the site plan, the second page is elevation, the third page is circulation. That's, that's all for that proposed set, but for the previously approved, yes, it does have a lighting plan.
I see.
Unless it's submitted separately.
Okay. Okay, understood, okay, it's just called the existing plan, that's why I was getting confused between proposed and existing. I have no further comments, the rest have been addressed by the other commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay. Item number seventeen two seventy one ninety B C sixty eight oh one Queens Boulevard, Queens.
Uh we have provide, we have received proof of uh service of initial filing and proof of hearing. Uh Community Board uh opposes uh this application because the applicant um did not, uh the as the Community Board states that um the applicant did not meet Community Board's request regarding no parking on sidewalk and for uh and um for not wanting to provide one electric charging station. Um this is an application for an extension of term for a continuous use um of an automotive repair uh facility on the subject side and a waiver of board's rule. I just want to mention about the Community Board's uh ground for opposition. Um especially with regards to the electric charging station. Um this is an automotive repair facility. Um it is unlike a gas station or so where anybody can go, I mean, here also anybody can go, but typically in gas stations, you have charging stations, you would have ga- uh where you have um you know, cars go to fill up gas, you go to get your charging station. Um I think there it makes sense and I believe um I'm not sure how re- reasonable of an ask that is for, especially for an existing automotive repair facility where you take your vehicles just for repairing uh to have an electric charging station. Um but it's a business decision for the applicant, it's not something I don't believe, I'm in a position. Um I don't think the board should be in a position to ask, unless there's a change in the regulations and uh that would want us to reshape some of the discussions, but at this point, I'm, I do not see that. Um, so the um last um the last extension that was granted uh expired on October twenty twenty one. Uh applicant need uh has provided photos from twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen and twenty twenty. Um so for Google Street View, um business has been in operation in twenty twenty and twenty twenty two, however, it doesn't show twenty twenty one, but I I think it's been continuous, it's just Google didn't pick up every year. Um I did not have any comments on the continuous use part of it. With regards to the compliance chart, um the compliance chart has been provided, the 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 um conditions from prior grant were not indicated. The applicant needs to include all the prior grounds and go through each one of the conditions from the prior grounds and indicate whether they're complying or if those are, those have been superseded, indicate that. Uh provide interior site photos and site lot uh side lot condition. Yeah, based on Google Street View, um there are more than eight vehicles parked on the site. Uh the revised plan indicates ten spaces, I just want to make sure that is adequate for the business operation. And and it can be accommodated. Uh per proposed plan and previously approved approved plan, there is a, there is planting along the residential uh lot line. Um I saw some photos showing it, but it wasn't quite clear, so maybe and as that's why I'm I'm asking for an interior lot line photos to get a better sense of the lot line condition. Um there is a banner mounted on the fence in the interior. Um that needs to be removed, um otherwise it gets counted in the sign analysis. Uh the applicant is just requesting an extension of term, no other changes uh are being proposed. Um the, as I mentioned, provide photos of the landscaping. Lighting, indicate on the plan location of the exterior lighting and add a note to the plan that all lighting sources that are located on the lot line uh adjacent to residential use shall be shielded from direct view and pointed down and away from residences to minimize any adverse effect on the surrounding residences. Um unless the lights are turned off when the business uh is not in operation during the weeknights and weekends. The applicant should clarify that. With regards to signage, uh two hundred and ninety four square foot of signage is proposed all along Queens Boulevard. Um now hundred and fifty square foot per frontage is permitted. Prior board, prior board approved a total of three hundred square foot. In bracket, it says hundred square, hundred and fifty square foot per use per zoning resolution section thirty two dash six forty two. Um so I want the applicant to confirm how many users are operating from this site, it seems there are two uses. So you would be allowed maximum of hundred and fifty times two, that's three hundred. Now, based on the two use uh users on the sites, two uh two tenants on the site, the existing and the proposed signage do not comply with the prior grant. One of the business sign is more than hundred and fifty square foot. Also, there is a signage on the trailer which was not calculated. The business sign for precision auto business needs to comply with zoning resolution section thirty two dash six forty two, which is hundred and fifty square foot. Also, the signage uh signage chart is incorrect, it states three times one fifty. Um as long, since there are two business operations, it really is two times one fifty. Um so um and here the analysis is done not by frontage, it's being done by business. Uh overall, the site seems to be in good condition, no graffiti um on the fence. Um the fence along the street frontage also seems to be in good condition. However, I did notice tires located outside the building along the Queens Boulevard frontage. Uh are these tires uh to be discarded, oftentimes uh we are told that that's what is uh those are kept for pickup. Um the applicant should clarify that, uh where is the trash stored and clarify why the applicant did not agree to the Community Board's condition regarding parking on the sidewalk, because I did see a couple of Google Street Views, I did see one or two cars parked on the sidewalk, but in other instances, they were not, so the applicant needs to clarify that. Um Vice Chair Shabata.
Uh thank you Chair, I uh I did too see uh vehicles parked on the sidewalk, both uh in the Google and uh in the site visit. Um I believe that uh so with that part of the Community Board's uh opposition, I I certainly understand it, and I believe that the applicant must address that. With regard to the electric charging station, um despite its practicality on this particular lot, uh I think that um you know, I think it's important to recognize that this has been around since nineteen fifty eight. Um and uh and and we don't, I think it, I agree with you, I think it's outside of our purview uh to make such a requirement, uh being that there's no uh statute or text that would would permit such a requirement from us to make. Uh and nor is there any, uh I I don't see the leeway in that type of requirement, so uh with other than that, most of my comments were were already uh were already, you already stated, so I have nothing further.
Thank you, Executive Director. Um Commissioner Artley Brown?
I just have a question in that the previous resolution called for a maximum of eight used car sales on site, and yet the proposed plan show ten spaces for car sales. So um would this require any kind of amendment before us or just a a change noted in the resolution?
Yes, Commissioner Lee Brown, if it's uh if it's directly uh requesting a change to a condition of the board, then it would require amendment.
Okay, this was a, this was a condition?
This was mentioned in the resolution as a maximum of eight used car sales.
Okay, so then it is an amendment.
Would we be able to do that by substantial compliance or we'd have to, uh just, they'd have to refile for an amendment?
No, it has to be a filing of an amendment, we don't have administrative authority to overrule a board condition.
I understand.
And pay a fee?
Um what were you saying? Um Miss Mathias?
I'm saying and pay the fee also, this.
Oh, right, yes.
Revised form, statement of facts, fee.
All right, thank you, and. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you Chair, I I agree with my colleagues that the issue of uh sidewalk parking nu- need to be resolved on that E V charging station. Uh I don't see a venue for us to push for that. And I'm willing to listen to the applicant if if they have a specific reason not to install it. Um I would you, would be open to uh listen to that, thank you.
Okay. Um Commissioner Yun?
Thank you, um all of my comments have been addressed, uh but I I'm looking at the resolution and it looks like in twenty eleven yeah, there was an amendment to reduce the number of parking spaces for used car sales from ten to eight. And so now they are going back to ten, so just to note that it's very specific that that was an amendment quite intentionally in twenty uh ten, sorry, in twenty eleven.
Okay.
Um so the applicant should confirm that they want to move forward with the amendment to go back.
Okay, thank you, that's, yeah, so that's definitely an amendment, yeah. All right, is that the last case?
No, no, there's two more. Item number eight, I was just waiting for you to say really, one uh one ninety five, item number eighteen one ninety five oh two B Z B Z twenty seven ninety seven Lyndon Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Well, just, I I'm just opening up the drawings. All right, so we have received proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing. Um Community Board, uh we have not received any recommendations uh from.
No, not yet.
Uh this is an uh extension of term and an amendment uh for a continuous use of an eating and drinking establishment with an accessory drive-through facility at the subject site. Um the term expired um on Feb- uh on February twenty twenty three and the there was the condition that was, uh there were condition associated with landscaping menu board. Um and menu board being operational, be uh not being operational from uh nine uh be a be at a lower um D B A uh between the hours of nine P M to eight A M. Um so I don't think a proof of continuous use in this case is required. Uh applicant has uh needs to provide a compliance chart of the conditions. Um with regards to the proposal, the applicant is proposing to enlarge um the building by a hundred and fifteen square feet to accommodate an A D A accessibility um access route i- into the uh building. Uh the proposed enlargement is minimal and it would uh allow for an A D A accessibility. I would like the applicant to clarify the use of the curb cut on Ruby Street. Um is it only for a service access and um because the applicant is also proposing to re- uh reconfigure the curb cut on Ruby Street and convert the westernmost curb cut on Linden from an exit to an exit and entry. Um and add an additional curb cut of eighteen foot width um and a seventeen foot wide curb cut from the drive um drive-through which is already existing. So there is little bit of uh realignment of the site plan that's uh being proposed. Uh so the I, my question is with regards to the Ruby Street. Um the applicant is also uh proposing to reconfigure the layout of the parking space and add additional parking space. Uh so there'll be a total of nineteen parking spaces increased by one. Um applicant needs to provide a striped pedestrian crossing at the end of the lane for the pedestrian to cross from the parking lot to a parking area to the restaurant entrance. Uh I would like the applicant to clarify what is the current hours of operation uh for the drive-through. Um the uh the drawing says the proposed plan, um the proposed plan has a note saying the existing tra- trash enclosure to be modified. Um please clarify what those modifications are. And also clarify the hours of operations, um hours of gar- garbage collection. Um I I believe based on the prior resolution, it's Sunday to Wednesday, nine P M to ten P M. Uh Sundays and Wednesdays, nine P M to ten P M, so the applicant could clarify that if that still holds or if there's been a change. Um landscaping, the applicant is proposing a four foot wide um in-ground planting um along the residential lot line in the rear. And it would be a two hundred foot linear um landscaping area buffered by a a six foot high fence with acoustic block material. Um so um I have to say, I've I'd gone to this site uh when it was initially submitted uh in back in, I think, uh twenty twenty one. And it is a very well-kept site and the landscaping is in very good condition. So addition of the landscaping along the residential rear lot line is definitely a plus and uh and a and an improvement to already a good amenity uh and uh site condition that this uh site provides. Uh however, I do want the applicant to indicate on the site plan the proposed width of the planting bed. Per section A A on sheet thirteen, the planting bed width is seven point seven foot versus the section on sheet five which is four foot. Uh so do clarify which one it is. Um also, it seems from section A A, page five, the proposed fence will be located well inside the lot line. Uh dimensions, uh dimension this on the plan. Um and uh also make sure that the drawings are consistent. Uh the existing landscaping along Linden, as I had mentioned, is in ve- is very well maintained. And these addition of two rows of evergreen at the rear lot line uh will be an improvement and will provide visual buffer from the abating residential uses. And also providing the acoustic block material uh will be an added uh noise attenuation measure. Um so with regards to the menu board, is it a new menu board that is being proposed? And uh what is the, and will it be a new A B C system, so if the applicant could clarify that? Uh with regards to the lighting, is it a new lighting system that is being proposed? Uh and uh the applicant should add a note to the lighting plan that all lighting sources that are located on the lot line adjacent to residential use shall be shielded from direct view and pointed down and away from residences to minimize any adverse effect on the surrounding residences. Um overall, uh the site has been very well maintained. And uh, though I would say the statement of fact is very sparse on detail. So um, a lot of the questions that I have raised here needs to be responded to and addressed in the statement of fact. Um, Commissioner Vice Chair Shibata?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I have nothing more to add. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Artley Brown?
Yes, um, I read in the statement, I believe, or maybe it was in their comments that the trash pickup is ten PM on Tuesdays and Fridays. So my question is, as the trash enclosure is along the northern light lot line adjacent to the homes and only separated by a four-foot wide landscaping strip, there could be a lot of noise associated with the pickup. Is there a way they can um make that earlier on Tuesdays and Fridays? So it doesn't disrupt people who are getting ready for bed. So perhaps, you know, like seven or eight o'clock, just bring it down by a couple of hours if possibility, if it, there's a possibility. And then a similar, I have a similar concern about the menu board and speaker because in this case it is twelve feet from the nearest home. So um, my question is, there is a previous condition that the menu board volume does not exceed fifty DBA from nine PM to eight AM. And so the question that I have is, how are the neighbors with that? Is there a way they could reach out with the neighbors and just ensure that the neighbors are okay with that level of sound between nine PM and eight AM in the morning? And that's basically it. I do remember, I believe this site was before us briefly and then it was withdrawn for the time being. And I think the issues that we had were these issues, the menu board location, the twenty-four-seven operation, the trash enclosure location. And so not that I don't want them to be in business. I just want to ensure that they are properly buffering their operation from the residential because it is right on the lot line.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think uh, I just want to look at the plan. The, the proposed plan will have a, have the landscaping buffer and the acoustic block. I, I think for the entire length of the rear lot line. And the landscaping would wrap around the trash enclosure.
Yes, that's what I saw as well. It's just the proximity. If you look at the photos, the homes are right there, like there is no real space.
Yeah. But, uh, yeah, there is a drive-through, I think, right next to it. So there's a gap of about thirteen feet or so from the building and the, but it's a good question and we, the applicant can clarify. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I have two main comments. One of them is regarding the Lumen spread diagram. They choose really high values and I, allow me to share my screen because I'm gonna need to um to use it for the sound as well, for the noise as well. So if you look at on the Lumen spread diagram, let me just take this thing away. You can see values of four point eight here, four point six, four point three, four point two, sorry. They need to take a look at these values, try to get them down. Uh, I don't know how. But from the Lumen spread, I'm gonna move to the sound and noise. And if you look at the menu board here, the base of the menu board, the column, the post is this uh, location here, and then the menu board is can lever that way downward. Now, let's go to the uh, the noise diagram. This is page thirty. And again, here you can see that this is the post for the menu board. And then it's can lever inward uh to the side. Uh, if you look at section AA, the on the, the inconsistency with this section is not only the seven point seven feet. That's in con- in uh, conflict with the four point something width of the planting bed. But if you look at the menu board here, it's shown backward. It should be here, going that way, and then it can reverse that way. So I believe they carpet and pasted this section maybe from another project. So they need to fix that. Uh, I do agree that the, the menu board, if it's gonna be constructed the way it's shown on the plan, is gonna be very close. And actually, uh, when I looked at the values on the section, that, that, the sixty-two, the fifty-eight, the fifty-four, these, they do make sense for the menu board that we usually encounter in these kind of projects. That the limit that the previous code specified, that the output of the menu board shouldn't exceed fifty DBA. If the ABC is on all the time, it's not practical, it's not gonna be achievable. Because what the ABC does, it senses the ambient noise, let's say it's a, it's fifty. And then it automatically adds to that fifteen DBA. So the total, if the ambient's fifty, the total would be automatically sixty-five. So fifty is not, in order to achieve fifty, you need to go with the ambient down to thirty-five, which I believe in New York City is is kind of like um, a dream, it's not achievable. So they need to take a look at that section. But if we look at the, the, the values here in the legend, it, the red is says it's up to thirty-six. I'm not sure what is the thirty-six and what is the, uh, if you look at the red here, it's sixty-seven. So it's, there is, there is some sort of like inconsistency, inconsistency again between the legend and that section. In, in short, they need to take a look at the uh, that, that, that noise study and the Lumen diagram. And for the noise, I understand that they are proposing to install a two hundred uh feet long uh acoustic fence uh along that residential property. That's gonna be helpful, but order for us to understand how noise works and save a headache in the future from complaints from neighbors. They need to give us the uh, acoustic rating, how much noise that fence would be able to like filter out and how much would pass to the other side. If I, I don't believe that if they get a, it's an easy job, if they put a fence with enough height and based on that modified section that we're gonna need to look at, section AA after they modify. If they put us a fence with that enough uh STC rating, it, it's gonna be achievable. They can filter out, if they put an ABC that limits uh the extra noise to fifteen DBA above ambient and that fence is capable of filtering fifteen or more. This is like they are canceling the entire noise that's coming from the venue. But they need to look at this right and, and study it well. Thank you.
Okay. So if I understand that if they are, if the, the menu board is the new kind of the menu board with the ABC built in, um, and then the additional of uh acoustic fans, it would improve the condition and the prior condition that the board had will be not relevant.
Yes, that's true. If the ABC is kept on all the time, of course.
Right. Of course. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I um also had, I agree with Commissioner Sheta's comments. I had very similar comments. I also, just as a general rule, we can't add decibels because decibels are on a logarithmic scale, so you can't say fifty and fifteen makes sixty-five. So that just to, it's a, it's, I wish it was that easy, if not. But just for our own collective discussion, so we're not saying anything incorrectly. Um, decibels, you have to do a separate calculation based on a logarithmic scale. In any case, I completely agree with Commissioner Sheta. And I think the section, once drawn, on, this is the one on page thirteen, um, once drawn according to the actual proposed site condition with correct dimensions and heights because the fence there is shown much higher than six feet. It's all quite diagrammatic. We need an accurate section with dimensions that show the actual proposed condition across that menu board and uh the height of the speaker, the height of the fence, uh, and all of the width as uh Chair you mentioned. Uh, once we have that, then we'll be able to say with much more confidence that this will not be a disruption to the neighbors. That's all.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I, I didn't want to talk about logarithms because the moment
I know, I know.
The moment we start talking about logarithms, people start like to leave, so.
Yeah, I, I know, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Final case, item, item number nineteen, twenty nineteen, two ninety-nine BZ, eighty-two oh one, eighty-two thirteen, Queens Boulevard, Queens.
Just give me a second. I am just opening the site plan. Okay, so we have received proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing. Um, the community board voted to approve the, the application. This is an application for an amendment to a previously approved plan for a continuous use of a subject, on the subject site for a gasoline service station. Uh, this is a corner triangulated lot. As many of the board members here would recall, back in twenty twenty-one, the board had approved an amendment um of the plan which would have resulted in converting the um existing auto repair uh facility to a uh convenience shop and uh providing a new canopy and replacing the existing dispenser and the location uh from two to three um uh dispensers. The applicant is um proposing to install um the, two more dispensers. Um, so it could be a total of uh five dispensers that are being proposed. And also is proposing to uh not enlarge the building as was previously granted, but reduce the building footprint um, yeah, much le- lower than actually the building, proposed building footprint much less than what the, yeah, uh, the existing building is. Um, so, and also is proposing to alter the auto repair building com- completely into a convenience store. I think the previous one had a bit of a auto repair and the convenience shop. This one will be all, all just con- convenience shop. Um, at the twenty twenty-one hearing, the board had expressed concerns regarding the maneuverability. Uh, and when the number of dispensers were being proposed to be increased to three. And uh, and re- and um, so I still have that question now. While the building footprint is being reduced, um, the question still remains that uh there now the proposal is to have three rows of um, of dispensers, a total of five. And uh, I feel the site is narrow, especially given it's a triangulated uh site. Um, the last dispenser on the, at the corner. Typically, what I have seen in such kind of site conditions, those um vehicles that would be using that last set of the dispenser uh that's located in the corner will end up blocking the sidewalk. Um, and this is um not a desired outcome of this change. Um, I would be okay to extend it to two rows of uh dispensers uh with total of five. But I am doubtful of the maneuverability and more importantly, the safety of the pedestrian along the two sidewalks, specifically at this corner. Um, so at most, you know, have two rows of uh dispensers, that would be my recommendation. And uh, the proposed plan shows there would be a parking space that would be oriented um north-south. And uh, I al- I'm almost worried of that situation because that would end up vehicles partially being on the sidewalk. It is better to have the car parked uh in an east-west orientation. And I think the previously approved plan had two such east-west oriented parking spaces. And I think that can be done, especially if you remove um the, the sole dispenser at the westernmost end. Those are my comments. Um, Vice Chair Shibata?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I had similar comments as to the layout and the maneuverability. And I, I wait to hear the applicant's response to that. Uh, the only thing I'd like to mention is that this is a, this is going to be a, a um, this will, their, their proposal uh will lessen the degree of non-compliance by getting uh, by no longer having the repair shop. So I just want to put that on the record. I have nothing further.
Okay. Um, thank you. Commissioner Artley Brown?
I do not have any additional questions.
Are you okay with the layout?
I'm okay with the layout, actually.
Okay. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I uh didn't see a lighting and I don't think it's needed. Uh, uh, the second thing is that they need to fix the concrete sidewalk on the northern frontage along uh fifty first, uh, fifty first half. Uh, on the layout, I'm, I'm like neutral on it. I, 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 I don't have a preference on, on the li- the layout. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I, at the last hearing also, um, I mean, not last hearing, the prior board also um didn't think a Lumen study was needed, given its location. And uh, the building behind it i- is an apartment building with a solid wall. Um, and the, the, the spread of the lighting was just along the street frontages. So, um, okay. And uh, with regards to the treatment, fixing of the sidewalk, um, the applicant should clarify. I believe the applicant was proposing to kind of redo the entire site, so this should be part of that fixing. Um, all right, thank you. Um, Commissioner Yun?
Uh, thank you. I would like to um hear or see a circulation diagram. I initially, I don't have any strong concerns about the proposed layout. It is such a strange triangulated and kind of sharp site, so there does seem to be a lot of public right-of-way space to maneuver. But I understand what you're saying as far as having the cars parking on the, potentially parking on the sidewalk. Uh, just one small question, if they're proposing several new street trees along Fifty First Avenue? And if there was any possibility to add some to Queens Boulevard?
Yeah, um, I think that was us the last time also, but the applicant can clarify. Um. Thank you. Yeah.
Anything else?
No, we can go to the new.
Um, so this concludes the public review session, sorry, the review session for April tenth, twenty twenty-three. Do you want to move on to the hearing, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I think if everybody's okay with it, we can move on to the public hearing session. Yeah.
Okay, so good morning again. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for April tenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll begin with the continued hearing items for special order calendar. Item number thirteen, one twenty-nine ninety-seven BZ, one fifty sixty-five Cross Island Parkway. Queens.
We have Ms. Anagnostus.
Anagnostus. Can I allow it? There's a lot of talk, I think I'll lower it. Join us, Ms. Anagnostus.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is your video on? Hmm, we can't see you.
Hey, I'm not sure why, but.
Um, let's, we don't. Let's just proceed. Oh, she has to be sworn in.
I'll raise my virtual hand.
Is that acceptable counsel?
Um, no, let's try and figure out why we can't see.
Oh, now it says join us panelists.
Yeah, there you go. There we go, okay, great. Unmute Sandy. Ms. Anagnostus, sorry, thank you. Raise your right hand to affirm the tell the, I'm sorry.
Uh, uh, you're all by yourself, is there anybody else from your team?
Yes, I'm by myself.
Okay, thank you.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond on the board member's questions?
I do.
State your name and proceed.
Sandy Anagnostus, representing the applicant. Um, good morning, I heard the comments in the review session earlier. Uh, regarding the two items, we will be revising the plans to indicate the location of the air and vacuum machines. Which are located along Cross Island Parkway and will be providing proof of continuous use. Um, mainly through Google Street View for all the years since the prior grant.
Yeah.
And we can do that within a week or so.
Okay, uh, we have a pretty heavy agenda, um, so I. Don't know um how, if we can have it scheduled for April or not. Uh, any other question, uh, any other questions or comments for uh Ms. Anagnostus? Commissioners, uh, they don't, let's go to the public. And thank you for making the submission, Ms. Anagnostus.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, the case we are currently discussing is one twenty-nine ninety-seven B Z, one fifty sixty-five Cross Island Parkway, Queens. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six. Or outside the city limits, our toll-free number is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight one three five six four one oh nine three seven, and then the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will enter the pound sign only. Once you are permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you are on the phone. And if you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hands. Once you are permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss your case, this case.
Um, I also want to compliment you on your compliance chart. It was very helpful that you kind of connected the compliance elements to the photos or the drawings. Or any other documents that were submitted um in the early iteration also, so it was a very easy way to. Connect the dots, um, so I do appreciate that, this is a good example, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're just waiting for the clock to run out.
I see no hands.
All right, maybe I would say maybe a May hearing, um, but not April.
Okay, do you wish to close this, Madam Chair?
Yes, make a motion to close.
Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Atlee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Thank you. New cases, they, sorry, thank you. New cases, item number fourteen, two ninety-five fifty-seven B Z, one forty-six fifteen Union Turnpike, Queens.
This be Todd Dale?
Yes. Now, who is joining us panelists? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning, please raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond on the board member's questions?
I do so affirm.
Please state your name and proceed.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant. Um, first, I would like to thank the board for its patience with this particular application. Uh, as you're aware, there was a, uh, the prior architect uh was not familiar with the board's standard appeals process. And then also recently left the project, um, but our office is now involved, and we're also. Um, the operator has actually um retained, actually. Mr. Gonzata's office to help with the plans, who's very familiar with gas stations and the board process. So we'll be able to uh respond to all the issues that were raised. Um, with respect to the items in the review session, I would uh just confirm, we can add that standard lighting note to the plan. Um, I I just have a quick question, um, because I haven't done a a gas station in a while, is there a standard note that the board uses that?
Yes, we'll send it to you.
Thank you.
We'll send you a sample.
Perfect, easy enough, and we'll put that note on the plan. Uh, we will move uh any of the merchandise that's for sale inside the building, and we'll note the ice machine on the plan. Uh, I'll review the prior sign analysis, and we can submit a updated sign analysis. And confirm uh compliance. Um, uh, Chair, you raised a question about continuous use, I'm not sure. Do we need additional proof for this one, since the term expired in August twenty twenty-one? Um, we're still within two years operating now, I'm not sure if additional proof is needed for this particular term, and if so, what you would want.
You're right, it is within two years, um, I forgot about the August part of it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, sorry to interrupt, uh, we'll provide a compliance chart with all the conditions. Um, just to confirm, since notice of the application was a bit um, uh, uh. Was incomplete, uh, prior, we've since notified the community board, and a meeting is scheduled April nineteenth. Um, and we'll attend that, but you can note that for the record, and um, I'm not sure if that community board issues that recommend regulation to our office or directly to the board, but. Uh, we'll make sure that that gets to the board prior to uh any future appearances. Uh, we can provide more photos um of the interior of the lot, we'll confirm the landscaping is all set, and then also any uh graffiti removal. Uh, when I visited the site, I did notice it was graffiti on that one white masonry wall. Um, we'll confirm who's responsible for the wall and and the graffiti, um, but ensure that any graffiti for any. Uh, walls or sections of the site that are controlled by the operator that that's taking care of, and include that in any interior photos. And we'll confirm um the vacuum machine operating hours, but we would agree to a condition not to operate it overnight between nine P M and seven A M. And uh, we can speak to the operator about adding a sign if there is not already a sign near the vacuum machine. Um, to let patrons know that it's not permitted to use it during off-hours. I believe that was the extent of the comments, if I missed anything, I'm happy to add to the list.
Uh, I think Commissioner Ashetta had a question regarding drainage, and and I am now, uh, as I'm looking at the plan. You do not have any um cleaning machines or anything like that, like are those um auto cleaners? Car cleaning?
You mean washing machine?
Yeah. What uh, whatever, I I forget what are they called, automated car wash machines?
No, I don't believe there's any there, no. So.
So, the question you had Commissioner Sheta with regards to drainage, what was it in regards to?
It's it's not uh like tied to a washing uh facility inside the station. Usually, like Commissioner, you were mentioned during the last hearing, usually the stations are required, these kind of. Uh, facilities are required to ensure that no drainage runs from the site to the street. They keep their storm order into the property, and we just want to make sure that you have enough drainage on-site to not to like dispose. Uh, runoff to to the catch basins or to the streets.
So noted, um, I don't believe there's been any complaints or issues, but we'll work with the operator and uh. Uh, our our new team engineer to make sure that uh information's either noted on the plan or provide some information to you regarding that drainage.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so that was the one I missed, but I believe that that is the extent of the items, um, and we'll definitely be able to submit that. I, you know, we, I know it's always a question that's forthcoming, we can be flexible with the board's calendar. Um, especially since we're waiting on the community board meeting the nineteenth, and I'm not sure if they're gonna have a full board after that, so. Uh, we would need to rush for the next submission, I would say.
Okay, um, any questions or comments for uh Mr. Dale, Commissioners? Let's go to the public while we're waiting for the public to call in, um, let's.
Case, the key, okay, the case we're calling, yeah, sorry, the case we are currently discussing is two ninety-five fifty-seven B Z. One forty-six fifteen Union Turnpike, Queens, should you wish to discuss, please dial six four six five five eight eight six five six. Oral toll-free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight one three five six five one zero nine three seven, and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Why, um, at the next prompt, sorry, want to permit it in, press star nine to raise your hand, press star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Okay. Um, Ms. Dale, I think I can safely say June is a possibility.
Okay, that should, that should work with all of our timing and the community board timing.
Okay, um, I'm not going to close on it because we do want to hear what the community has to say, and there are still some questions. I guess that we need to make sure is responded to properly.
No.
All right, any other questions or comments last minute for Mr. Dale, so that we get this done next hearing, and then we can move on? Oh, we still have something left.
Yeah, I wanted to just say, Mr. Dale, you mentioned that you also noticed the graffiti on the white masonry wall to the rear. Of the site, it's, it extends all the way across the length of it, only a small portion's white, it's it's the whole retaining wall and. The building wall that continues along this, that kind of parking side yard. So I would just say, if it is the owner's, the applicant's, your owner's responsibility to clean up the graffiti, then. It would be great to have that cleaned up come the next hearing.
Uh, I agree, and and we'll do that, I just mentioned it white because in my head, I'm thinking of the white wall, but yes, we'll much.
I know, I know, just to clarify, thank you.
No, understood, I'm I'm not trying to duck anything, that's not a particular comment.
And I think while you're at it, um, the the here and there, the paints are chipping, so if you could also take care of the. The have your client take care of the painting of the white wall.
Okay.
Or wherever the whiteness is.
Understood.
Just, uh, otherwise it seems like a good, it's a, it's a, it's a good buffer with planting. Except for a little bit of gaps in it, but um, just looks nice, otherwise. Yeah.
Okay, timeframe went out.
And, you know, I think between now and June, if your applicant can also address some of those things, that would go a long way.
Understood.
Okay, no one, no one raised their hands, no one called in to raise their hands.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dale.
Thank you.
Next item is four ninety-eight eighty-three B Z, twenty-one thirty-one Highland Boulevard. This is Mr. Ampola. Good morning, Mr. Ampola. Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond on a simple board member's questions?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Peter Ampola, on behalf of the applicant, uh, we attended the review session this morning, and to kind of just jump in with questions raised. Uh, Chair, you had asked for a estimate, like a rough timeline as to what we're looking for. Um, we are asking for the max of four years. Um, as this is an extension of time to obtain a certificate of occupancy, a building of this size and everything involved. We're anticipating, you know, a lot of legwork as it goes through with the D O B application process, so that's why we are asking for the max amount of time. In reference to Vice Chair Shabeta, uh, question was asked what the perspective of financing is at this time. A um, until such time that a lease is signed with a prospective tenant, banks won't allow any type of construction financing. So, even with a personal loan or guarantee, so our client is currently going through that journey right now to. Obtain that, so that's where we stand with financing. Uh, Commissioner Atlee Brown, you had inquired about the for-sale sign and that we're seeing. Uh, the signage on the construction fence does say for-sale and for lease, and being that our client has kind of been carrying this through COVID. He's interested in exploring what's out there as it pertains to a single user for sale and or building the site. And then leasing out floor by floor dependent on, um, either way, though, the building footprint will be remaining the same. And the floor area previously approved by the board, nothing shall change in that reference. And Commissioner Shabeta, you had asked for the addition of no changes proposed to the plans within the statement of facts and findings. We will gladly do so and submit. I think I covered everything, might have missed something.
Okay, uh, any questions, uh, Commissioner, you had a question?
No, I'm satisfied with the answer, there's no change in what's going to be built, so it don't affect the parking lot in any way.
Right, okay, thank you, all right, let's go to the public, thank you, Mr. Ampola.
The case we are currently discussing is four ninety-eight eighty-three B Z, twenty-one thirty-one Highland Boulevard, Staten Island. If you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six, oral toll-free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight one three five six five one oh nine three seven, and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only, once you're permitted in, you will raise, press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone, and if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand uh to speak. Once you are permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Um, Mr. Ampola, just for the record, in a letter form, just uh um, provide the same statement that you made here. Uh, which is regarding the financing, the issue of us uh providing uh. What state you're in, and then um, that, that while you are exploring tenancy, it will not change anything with regards to the layout. Or the prior grants.
Will do, thank you.
I'm gonna make a recommendation to close it. And now we'll have it scheduled, um, the earliest weekend, so how soon can you turn around your letter? Can you put around the letter?
Then a week, yeah.
Within a week?
Yes.
This is an extension of time.
Yeah, let's please mute or somebody mute in the background there.
Yeah. Um, so if we are to schedule it for April twenty-fourth hearing, the submission is due April sixth.
April sixth? Oh, sorry.
That's gone, right?
Yeah.
So the, that doesn't work, so then it's, uh, would be May eighth or ninth.
If it's May eighth and ninth, that would be a, uh, it's an April twentieth submission.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to, thank you, Mr. Ampola, make a motion to close.
Sure. Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Okay. Move on, Madam Chair.
Yes, all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ampola again. Item number sixteen, one oh six seventy-six BZ, one twenty-nine oh one North Conduit Avenue.
This is also Mr. Dale?
This is Mr. Dale.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole, where is she, where is she? I'm sorry, sorry, I can see it. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond on a simple or member questions?
I do so affirm.
Okay, please state your name and proceed.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant. Uh, I did listen to the, uh, board's review session this morning. Um, and in response to the comments were raised, uh, to confirm the community board conducted its full board meeting on April fourth and recommended approval of the application. Um, I am not sure if they sent that recommendation directly to the board, but I can reach out just to ensure that it gets into the board's record.
Thank you.
We will provide, uh, proof of continuous use. As, uh, Commissioner Otley Brown noted, it should be fairly simple. Google, uh, very fortunately came at a very regular intervals along North Conduit, so we'll provide that, uh, in, into the record. And we'll also include a compliance chart. And, uh, noting all the prior conditions. Uh, we, sorry, we can provide, uh, additional interior photos, notably also focusing on uh, Vice Chair Shabeta noted there was some graffiti. We'll just confirm that, uh, we'll review and make sure that there's no graffiti at the site. Uh, the trash enclosure is actually at the northwest of the site. Um, it is in a really solid, well-maintained masonry, uh, enclosure, and we'll provide some specific photos of that. And we'll also provide photos of the, the plant and the landscaping along the northern border of the site. Uh, so the board is aware, there is one tree that does need to be removed and there's a landscaping ticket scheduled to have a landscaper come out the end of this month to take a look at everything, so subsequent to their work, we'll make sure that the photos include anything that they do. And then, uh, we will add this standard lighting note to this plan. The one question I have is that, uh, as, uh, Commissioner Sheta noted, there was a lighting a Lumen diagram with the prior plans, but not with the, the current plan under the new engineer. Um, there really is the, the one border on the north. What I would ask is, I don't know if the board, in addition to the plan, would want a whole new Lumen study or measurements, you know, specific to that site. We're open to providing what's needed. I'm just not sure what, in addition to the note on the plan, uh, the board would prefer.
One oh six, I'm, I, I am just opening up the radius map, just for me to get a bearing. Okay, so it seems there are two sets of lights that are abutting the two residential buildings. From the from the photos and from the site plan.
Right, yes.
So typically for existing, um, I think we have done, what is our go, a standard, uh, that I think we modified the standard a little bit. I, I don't think we're asking for three foot, six foot and on and off and the.
No, 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 no.
We're not asking for that. We are asking for something very simple, just a measurement along the, um, residential lot line.
The, a computer model would be okay. Uh, but with, with, if, if from the computer model, you, the, your engineer believes that it's gonna be high lumens along the residential, he need to tweak the existing lighting as, as necessary. And, and then a note on the plan indicating that, uh, light should be, uh, directed away from residential to prevent shitting, that kind of standard language.
Okay, so.
We're not asking for measurements anymore.
Great, so what we'll do is we will definitely add that note and I will speak to the uh, architect engineer to make sure that they do a computer model to, to provide that data to the board.
If, if you want, we can send you a, a sample for that.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Um, I believe that's the extent of the comments from review session. Uh, I'm not sure I missed anything, but if I did, I'm happy to respond to it. Otherwise, we can definitely provide all that information uh, to, in an upcoming submission.
Yeah, and indicate the hours of operation. Is this a twenty-four seven operation?
This is twenty-four seven. It's actually been twenty-four seven since a specific board grant in nineteen eighty. So for forty years, it's been twenty-four hours.
Okay. Okay. I'm just looking at the plan one more time just to see if there's anything I missed. Signage, I did not have any issues, it needed to comply with. And all of these are illuminated and there, there are no non-eliminated signs?
Um, a little checking, there's the pylon sign. Because I can review with engineer about the signage, but I think that, how's this? I think the easiest answer is just to say, we'll double check and confirm the signage. We just add that to.
Yeah, that would be helpful because just looking at the sheets two of three and in that only illuminated signs are mentioned and not non-eliminated. The total needs to be of both.
Noted, so we'll just, we'll just make sure that we run through that. If they're gonna have to do a computer model, they can take a look at the signage while they're, they're doing it.
Yeah, thank you.
Right.
Uh, I'm looking at the Google image and I can see the pool, the light pool that's close to the residential. Just heads up. If your engineer runs the computer model and, and it gives a, like a higher reading at the residential property line, I believe he's gonna have one of three options. The first one is to move it away, which I don't believe it's the way to go. The second one is to shield it. And the third one is actually to just to grab with a phone mirror. The mirror that you download to a phone, you can just grab two readings and prove it to us that they are less than whatever. It's up to you to pick one of these three, but I'm giving you heads up. I don't want to delay and you come up with the submission and then we say, no, go get just, just heads up, so have him look at that. One of these through op, three options and, and, and whatever he picks will, will be okay with it.
Okay, so move, shield or phone mirror, understood?
Yep.
Okay.
And I give the cheapest to the third one.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Mr. Dale? Commissioners? All right, they're shaking their head now. Uh, let's go to the public then.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is one oh six seventy-six BZ, one twenty-nine oh one North Conduit Avenue, Queens. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six, or the toll-free number eight 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 four seven five four four one nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight one three five six five one oh nine three seven and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you are in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand. Once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss. Timer starts now.
Um, Mr. Dale, you did say the landscaper will be, um, visiting the site, so uh, I'm assuming you'll also make sure all the missing uh, landscape areas and the trees that need to be replanted will be all looked into at that time.
Uh, yes, indeed. We know for sure one tree needs to be replaced, but they'll review everything whether they're. It's, uh, primarily, I think, as I recall, the only landscape areas are really to the north. Um, but we'll double check everything.
Okay. Yeah, um, I think the portion of the landscaping that is along one thirty, it seems to be in good condition. It's the one along one twenty-nine. There, there are a lot of missing plants and, and some of them are not doing very well.
No.
Okay, how long will it take for you to make these corrections and probably even make some improvements on site, like removing the graffiti and, um, all of those things?
I, I would say a, a few weeks. I would wanna be safe because our ideal would be that, um, if the board is agreeable, the next appearance would be the last hearing, so I'd prefer, um, like a June hearing day just to ensure extra time, maybe four to six weeks to submit, to do the planting, take care of everything, just to be I, I'd rather not rush it and then have to come back again.
Okay, all right, since we have not received the compliance chart and those, um, those are some of the basic thresholds, we would need to go, go through that exercise, so I cannot close. Um, but yeah, the, as much as you can move for, move these tasks and take care of these improvements on site, it will, it makes it easier to expedite at our end. Um, so June, we can do.
A junior idea, that seems, uh,
Yeah.
to be the best schedule.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Dale Commissioners?
No, 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 there were no callers.
No, time has run out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Dale.
Thank you.
Also here for the next one.
Item number seventeen, I'm sorry, may I go on?
Yes.
Item number seventeen, two seventy-one ninety BZ, sixty-eight oh one Queens Boulevard, Queens. And raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond on a simple or member questions?
I do so affirm.
Please state your name and proceed.
Uh, good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant. Uh, I did, uh, attend the review session and listened to the board's comments. I'll just run through them here and check. Uh, to start, uh, we will review the compliance chart to make sure it has all the conditions. Um, we will be able to provide additional interior site photos specifically with respect to comments were made regarding the landscaping along the border with the one residential home that's adjacent, and also regarding the banner sign that was noted. I'm not sure it's there anymore, but we'll double check and take it down if it is. Um, speaking of signage, we'll review the signage chart um, and adjust it accordingly to make sure it's compliant. Uh, what I would do is I would note that it is a hundred and fifty square feet per use. I went back, uh, during the interim from between now and the review session and noted that what happened is the prior signage for the auto sales portion of the use, that signage on the previously approved plans was under a hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, they did change operators between the prior action before the board and this current application, and when they changed it, the sign still has essentially the same font, but there's a picture of a car which is on the left side of the sign and that counts towards the square footage where the other sign didn't have that, so that's what upped it over a hundred and fifty, so we'll review that to make sure that that is compliant. I would just note, uh, just for clarity's sake, Chair, you noted the three times, the three X frontage on the sign analysis. That notice just because you're allowed a hundred and fifty square feet maximum or three times the frontage of the site, so if you had a twenty-five foot lot, you'd only be allowed seventy-five feet, so that's what that three X frontage
I see.
refers to.
Yeah, because I think here it's the, you, uh, operate, the number of operators is what is applicable.
Right, so e, each operator would go past one hundred and fifty, but it's one hundred and fifty for both, so really the auto sales portion, we need to review that sign. Uh, I would note though, that since it is a corner lot, you would be allowed a hundred and fifty square feet uh, facing a side street, which I believe is sixty-eighth. Um, there isn't anything listed on the sign analysis, but as you noted, the trailer does have a sign uh, in, inside the lot. Um, I would need to review with the architect, but I believe that a sign on the trailer would be permitted on that frontage because it would be under a hundred and fifty uh, square feet or whatever that, that measurement is. I'm not sure if that's fifty feet, if that's.
But I think that's facing Queens Boulevard, it's not facing sixty-eighth Street.
That's how's this? We'll definitely review to make sure it's compliant. It's one of those situations where, um, how it's been applied when it faces one way, but it's visible from one corner. I've done a number of different cases before oath and how DOB applies this. Well, well, our goal is to make sure that it's compliant and not to try and circumvent everything, but it's just, I think that's the thought, is that you, you would be allowed signage on that frontage. Um, and I think that that's what that's intended to do, but we'll confirm that if it is there, that the orientation is proper, or we'll perhaps the operator will move it, I don't know, but we'll make sure it's compliant. It's just the fact that since this is a corner lot, um, uh, they, they would be allowed that. Um, we'll revise the plans. Um, it should be eight spaces. Um, we agreed to the condition last time. I don't think that there is an intent to go beyond the eight spaces. When I visited the site, there's never been more than eight cars, at least for myself personally, but we'll revise the plans to show eight place spaces, um, and keep this in application to seek an extension of term and not in amendment. Um, we'll add that standard lighting note to the plan. And with respect to the community board, we would agree, um, no parking sidewalk, no parking on the sidewalk, and agree to that condition. Um, after doing a bit of investigation, uh, after the community board, um, you know, as communicated to me in my visits from a site and talking with the property owner, it appears that there was one employee of one of the uses that was parking partially on the sidewalk as shown on the photos, and it has been clearly communicated that they're not permitted to do that. But that parking in the sidewalk was actually a repeat individual. It's not cars for sale that were on the sidewalk and it's not any cars that are being repaired by the auto repair use. It was essentially an individual employee of one of the uses, but since that has been communicated to the tenants, I've gone by the side a couple of times. I haven't seen the cars on the site, but we agree to that condition. I just wanted to assure the board that this wasn't a case of the use of the site that was causing this issue, because I know there's been sites where uh, sidewalks in the block based on the use, but this was based on uh, an individual who happened to be an employee of one of the sites. Um, and then with respect to the electric charging station, um, though I appreciate the community board's uh, environmental, um, conscience and, and orientation. As we communicated to them, it just really wasn't feasible at this particular site for a few reasons. Uh, the first is, um, this is not a site that's really traffic oriented, like a gas station. We would come in to get fuel or even a site where you would travel through like a eating and drinking establishment or something of the sort. Uh, the site is not open on Sundays and it has only daytime operation hours, and they lock the site, so you know, from a practical standpoint, if someone went in to charge their car, if it was actually on the site and then they wanted to leave, you know, a, a private individual's car might be locked there overnight. Also, um, you know, because of the, the limited You know, a a private individual's car might be locked there overnight. Also, um, you know, because of the the limited operation, the nature of the use, but also. You know, they don't control the, I know some sites in the city have. Charging stations on the exterior on the sidewalk, but that's city property. They wouldn't object if the city wanted to put in a charging station, but that's up to the city to decide if they want to put something in a sidewalk. But from an interior site location, it's just not feasible or 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 practical. And that we appreciate it. It's just something that really can't be done at this particular site.
Okay. Um. Uh, regarding the tires.
Oh, I I'll double check. My my understanding is that. How's this? The last time I was outside, I didn't see any tires. I don't know if those were tires for disposal. Or I've worked with other auto repair uses where they'll store tires inside when they're not um.
This doesn't seem like a uh situation where they stored the tire outside while businesses uh. While the auto repair is happening, uh, this. Definitely would be impossible to move on a daily basis in and out. It's not on a rack. These are piled one on top of the other. So it seems like it's either permanently there and used as a storage of for of excess tires. Or tires to be disposed.
How's this? I I wouldn't see, I don't have that answer now. I would need to check with the the owner and the operator to find out, but. We agree that it's not a situation where we want to have tires outside stored permanently. So we'd agree to that condition and I'll just get confirmation from it.
The site looks in good condition, um, except for that tire piece and you know, that tree in the corner definitely enhances the beauty of the site. I would. Whatever little green one can get i- in in an urban oasis. Um.
It's unusual to have a tree like that with uh sites like this.
Yes, it is. Um, I would though say just to make sure so that uh employees or a new employee does not make that error. A sign we posted um along the gate um that that says no parking uh on sidewalk.
Oh, sure, we can do that. That's that seems. Let me make a note of that.
Yeah.
No parking on signage.
Okay, any other question or comments for Mr. Dale? Did we talk about Lumen on this one?
Uh, as I recall, the 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 note needed to be added to the plan. Um, but this did not have a Lumen study prior. And also. I don't believe this site has any large poles like a gas station. Would, I think it's just normal operation and they're not open on Sundays or evenings, so. I think there would be minimal light effect, but we can definitely add that note to a plan. I know of no known complaints. Uh, regarding lighting at this site, it's not really a a light intensive use.
Yeah, I I don't believe so either. I I've gone by this site a couple of times. Um, but I. You may want to just add that in your statement of facts about the li- lighting that maybe gets turned off during the off hours. And uh, uh, something like that. And I understand you may need emergency lights or those motion sensor lights. The that's different from lights being kept on.
Right, for security, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, let's uh, any questions for Mr. Dale? If not, let's go to the public.
The case we are currently discussing is two seventy one ninety B Z sixty eight oh one Queens Boulevard, Queens. Should you wish to discuss dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or a toll free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight one three five six five nine five one oh nine three seven and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to be able to speak if you're on the phone, sorry. And if you're in the Zoom room, please raise your Zoom hand. Oh, um, please raise your Zoom hand. Once you're permitted in, you will have. Sorry, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
How much time you need, Mr. Dale?
Uh, we can be agreeable with the board's schedule uh based on earlier applications. If. June works for the other applications and it works for this one, we would be uh fine with that schedule.
June, June it is. And uh, I think between now and June, if you can put up some of the signs or remove. Uh, the no parking sign and remove uh excess banners, that also would be good.
Yes, we'll work to get all those things taken care of.
And if the tires are not meant to be there, come up with a solution as to where that needs to be kept stored. Uh, at least uh. During non-business hours, if it is meant to be used, then they need to be stored inside the building. So provide an operational plan.
Will do.
Thank you. Um. Okay, any other questions or comments for Mr. Dale? We'll go on to the next case otherwise.
No one has raised a hand, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dale.
Great, thank you.
Continue, we're gonna continue.
Yeah.
Okay. Item number eighteen one ninety five oh two B Z twenty seven ninety seven Queens Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Hi, good morning, Neil Weisbart on behalf of the applicant. Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Also, can you please let in Jared Jones?
Uh, Ms. Mathias, we can't hear you.
Hey Tony, get closer to the mic, please.
I can hear you.
Someone still has their YouTube on.
Tony?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, perfect.
Weird, that's.
I miss Matthias, can you please let in Jared Jones?
He's there.
He's there.
Oh, hi Jared, okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, raise both, raise your right hands. Do you affirm tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to all member questions?
I do.
Okay, please proceed. State your name for the record and proceed.
Hi, good morning, Neil Weisbart on behalf of the applicant. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I attended review session today and Jared's going to do some speaking about the brand new menu board and to address all those comments made by the board. I just wanted to go through the comments though previously that were mentioned. Uh, the community board, I reached out to the community board a couple of times. And they never scheduled a meeting. I'd be not sure how you want to handle that.
Okay, uh, when when was the last time?
Uh, February and then in March as well. I don't know the exact dates, but I did reach out to the district manager. She asked if there were any timelines. And I explained that there is a timeline and gave her the dates and I never heard back and then I followed up and still haven't heard back.
Okay, alright, well, um, maybe uh who's our project manager on this? Um.
I am.
Oh, Ms. Matthias, maybe you can reach out to the community board and find out uh when they can submit. Um.
I did reach out to them, but I haven't received anything response from them.
Alright, well, we we probably are not going to close on this today.
Okay.
So the community board has another month or so to hold a hearing and.
Okay, we'd be happy to attend. Uh, regarding the curb cut on Ruby Street, so currently that curb is damaged, that curb cut will be repaired. And that will only be used for deliveries and trash pickup. And Jared is going to revise that plan to note that there will be a sign that says for deliveries only. It's not for the restaurant patrons.
Okay.
Uh, there was also a request to add a straight pedestrian crossing from the restaurant to the parking lot. And Jared might need to speak to this more, but basically the exit to the restaurant is right onto the sidewalk. So people would not cross over the drive, the end of the drive-through lane where it says thank you, so they'll stay on the sidewalk right to. The their parked vehicle.
So you're quite sure that nobody will cross over the thank you?
So typically, when it's not on this plan, but I'll have it added for the next one, typically we'll put up a handrail to block people from stepping out directly there just because it's not the safest place. Somebody coming right out by the corner, so it's not currently on the plan, but I'll add it so that there's definitely a handrail or a barrier to stop people from stepping there.
So I would have to, if I park my car. Uh, by the Drew, one of the parking law spaces by Drew Street, I have to walk on the sidewalk to get into the restaurant.
Correct. That's that's the existing condition, how it is now, just how the restaurant is set up, so it's a current condition.
Okay, alright, if you could just kind of clarify that, that would be helpful in your statement.
Okay, uh, the existing trash enclosure will be modified. It's actually reduced. And is also be moved further away from the residences. You know, to accommodate the landscaping buffer and the acoustic block fence. So that should improve the situation for the trash enclosure.
Oh, so it will be moved from the current location?
It's it's so.
Alright, it is right there, right next to the lot. It's right next to the lot.
So essentially, it's being reduced in width to provide the the landscape buffer and it's being extended in the west direction. Just to accommodate, so it's get, it's going from more of a rectangle to more an elongated rectangle in the other direction.
Okay.
And I. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say Commissioner Arlie Brown asked to see if we could things the trash pickup hours to earlier in the evening to seven to eight. I don't think that's a problem, but I will check with the owner operator and McDonald's. And revise the statement of facts and hopefully there will be no problems with that.
Yeah, in in that, in that regard.
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
In that regard, uh, if it could move up a few more hours earlier, that'd be great too. Uh, like outside of dinnertime, if it can move up earlier than seven or eight, that'd be fantastic. Uh, preferably when people are at work or something along those lines.
Yeah, I don't think it should be a problem, so will make sense to me, okay.
And I would, the once that change has been incorporated, if you could just submit uh. Uh, whatever agreement document or whatever with the trash pickup you have, uh, indicating that the hours have been revised.
Okay. Uh, next comment was regarding the landscaping plans. There are some discrepancies. Jared has looked over this and he's going to revise the plans to make sure everything's consistent and clear. Um. The lighting, unfortunately, I apologize, we gave you a wrong plan. There will be all new lighting installed. And Jared sent me over the recent plan, which I will formally submit, but it there will be zero at the lot lines. Next to the residence, so that'll be a huge improvement. Uh, now the big uh point was the sound plan that we provided. Jared is. Familiar with what you're asking and he's going to revise that. The acoustic block fence will add. Significant amount of noise reduction. Jared, you want to just speak about that? The acoustic block fence will be for the entire length of the lot line, so. The entire length of the residences, which also includes behind the trash enclosure, the landscaping buffer. And this, a new menu board, which is a pretty modern board that McDonald's utilizes. Knowing that they want to lessen the impacts on neighbors and so Jared, I'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, so, uh, I think for Mr. Shudder that I asked a question about the menu board and the sound, so. It is a brand new menu board with the automatic voice controller. Um, it will always be on. The part that I have to clarify is based on your conversation about the ambient noise and what the peak is and how we can live at the peak, just to make sure we're not over. Uh, I think it's a sixty decibels. I have to get some information from the manufacturer just to make sure it complies with that. But um, there was also a comment about the acoustic block. Um, the acoustic block actually reduces any noise by twenty eight decibels. I'll make sure that's added in the plan, just so it's clear. Um, and I also have to update the section because it was kind of backwards as you mentioned, so. I I have that all in the works, it'll get taken care of and I'll clarify it for everybody.
Thank you, Jared. What I wanted to say, you go ahead, Chair.
No, you go ahead.
Yeah, what I wanted to say is that the way that the menu board is shown is is upside down, it's opposite to what is. The plan showing.
Correct.
This is, this is one element. The other element is I I got that the the point that A B C will be there and it will be on. And this is a like a very modern menu board. That's that's cool, that's good. But two, like you have two things to pay attention here to. Uh, the first one, this is the, this sound analysis is not like a traditional one. Because you're gonna be looking at the propagation direction. Uh, not the one that's the manufacturer provided in his white paper analysis. You're looking at the opposite, actually. If you're gonna install the menu board, the way, let me, let me show you what I'm talking about. If if the menu board is gonna be installed here. Yeah, if if this is the post and it's gonna be gently levering that way, the sound propagation is going downward.
Correct.
It's not going to the adjacent problem. This is a good point for you. You need to benefit from that. I'm not sure, I'm not a sound engineer, but all the analyses I've seen so far from the manufacturing of these boards. Talk about the propagation downward in that direction, not in the opposite. If you want to consume. The manufacturer, if he has something that you can benefit from, that would be helpful, helpful. The other thing. Is is the, I I haven't seen the rearing for the acoustic fence, just put that on the plan. And I I I don't think what you just mentioned, I don't think it should be like a a a mission, like a tough mission for you to achieve. No sound propagation crossing to the adjacent residential. I give this case as much easier than many others I've seen before.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Commissioner. I, like I said, I just got to confirm because the, from the white paper, that actual bubble back behind it is what they're. Uh, with their projecting the propagation will be, but again, I'll just double confirm that. Um. And the other item was the making sure the section at the bottom coincides with that right now.
Yeah, and and when you. Yep, when you look at that section, I believe this need to be here.
Correct.
Goes up and then inward and then you're gonna be looking at not the propagation in that direction, back.
Correct.
And we'll also add the height of the fence. I know that was a comment from Commissioner Yun.
Oh, sure, and and that section need to be drawn to scale.
To scale, yeah, correct.
Thank you.
I believe those were all the comments, but we're here if you have any other questions and if the community board wasn't in. Issue, we could turn this around very quickly. We'll also have the statement of facts reflect everything that we just spoke about as well.
Um, we have a pretty busy calendar uh for the month of May. Um, so most likely it is going to be June.
Okay.
Um. If we can squeeze you in for me, we'll try, but I doubt it. Um, so I'm just cautioning you um that it.
I think, I think early June would work. That's that's pretty, it's right around.
Yeah, we only have one hearing in June, so it will be, it will be early June.
Okay.
Um, I just, there was a question, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Gerard, you, uh, Mr. Jones, sorry. You had mentioned that the acoustic block will reduce it by some D B A. You had mentioned a number. What is, what was it?
It was twen- it was twenty eight decibels.
Okay.
Jared, you uh, you 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 missed clarification of what is the difference between the legend numbers? And the numbers on the sections. I'm I'm a bit confused. Why I see thirty six, thirty twenty four? And on the section, it's sixty something and and so on. What is, what is the difference between the legend and that?
This is the part that I have to work through with the, with the manufacturer on. One is based off one, one uh ambient noise and one is based off the other. I just got to clarify.
Okay.
What the maximum is gonna be, let's say, when it's, when it's fifty decibels ambient noise or sixty decibel, what's this thing gonna pump out? And that'll be basically the the baseline, because anything less than that's gonna be meet the standard, so.
You you you, we want to make them the same matching, so.
Absolutely.
Compare apple to apple. If if you're looking at the differential, put the differential in both, I'm fine with that. But if you're looking at the total ambient plus. But if you're looking at the total ambient plus, put that, like the commutator, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I have, like I said at the hearing, this site has very good landscaping and I'm hoping you're going to maintain that high quality of landscaping that you're proposing along the residential lot line and also maintaining it. It really is remarkably well-kept and has been for all these years. So we are holding you to that great standard that you've already established.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go to the public.
Okay, the case we are currently discussing is 19502BZ 2797 Linden Boulevard, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss dial 6465588656 or outside the city limits, our toll-free number is 8884754499. You will enter the webinar ID number 81356510937 and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand. Star six two, press star six two unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand. Once you are permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
So you will add a, you said, a railing, a separating the drive-through and the rest, right?
Correct.
And you'll indicate that on the plan, indicate the height?
Yep, I'll have a detail and everything for it added to the plan as well.
Thank you. All right. This, we are waiting for the clock to run out. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Weis, Weisbart and Mr. Jones? All right, so we are making this a June's hearing. Okay. Thank you. The only other thing I would add, add to the note, lower your volume for all the vehicles that are waiting in the drive-through lane, for them to lower their volume.
Be a good neighbor sign, yes, I like those.
Be a good neighbor, yes. So just indicate those on the plan and, and if you need a sample language, we can provide you with that.
Yeah, I have a sample that I can send to you.
I think we invented that, so.
Yeah. True, true, you did.
You have a pattern for it?
I wish.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we done? Shall we move on?
Okay. Um, I, sorry, I do have one. I just realized that, do you have a roll, rolling gate on Ruby Street? That's going to stay with the proposal?
So it was coming out just because it's not in great condition.
Okay. But will you then have like a fence, not a fence, I'm sorry, like a, like a chain that, that can be used to close it off, you know, when it's not going to be used for pickup or delivery?
Wasn't intending for that, but we could if we, if the board wanted.
I think this is again, just to ensure that you are securing that corner because it is a little remote and away from the rest of the activities along the parking lot. So this would just ensure that nobody's coming in or hanging out there.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
The final case is item number 192019299BZ 82018213 Queens Boulevard, Queens. This is Mr. Gonzata. Mr. Gonzata, join his panelists, please. All right, now raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
So you're by yourself, you're, you're by yourself. You don't have Mr. Gonzata with you, right?
Right, just me. My name is Diwakar Gupta and I'm representing Mizio J. Gonzata, LLC.
Okay. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Diwakar Gupta. I listened to the review, review session this morning. We'll see what we can do to make sure that the car is using the leftmost dispenser and then the leftmost parking space are not parked on the sidewalk. Most likely, we will end up taking out the dispenser, but just want to talk to the owner to make sure and make sure that there aren't any other, any other ways to revise the site plan to address that issue.
Okay.
And we will fix the concrete sidewalk along 51st Avenue. We're going to be adjusting the curb cuts along 51st Avenue and putting street trees in there. So we'll be working on that sidewalk anyway. Um, we have a circulation diagram and if we end up taking out the fifth dispenser, then we'll revise the circulation diagram accordingly. But we have one for the truck maneuverability diagram and one showing how vehicles using the pumps get in and out of the site.
Right. Um, and if you do remove the, the westernmost pump, does the orientation of the curb cut, would that still remain the same or would that need to be moved specifically the westernmost curb cut on Queens Boulevard? Would that need to be shifted more eastward or?
I think most likely we would shift it eastward, yeah.
Okay. And, and then same goes for the curb cuts on 51st or because you may end up killing that tree, that new tree that is being proposed on 51st Avenue.
Right, and that's the case of addressing the street trees. We proposed most of the street trees along 51st Avenue because Queens Boulevard is busier and we didn't want to impair any visibility for cars that are trying to turn at, at the intersection. But I think we could put one street tree at least along Queens Boulevard, basically directly south of the second tree to the, starting from the left. I think we could put one tree there without, while still maintaining visibility for any cars approaching that intersection.
Okay. To the south of the last curb cut?
To the south of the second tree, starting counting from the left. So the second tree along 51st Avenue, we could put another tree directly south of it along Queens Boulevard.
Okay, okay, so it would be right at the triangular area?
Yes.
Will that be permitted? Isn't that within 50 feet of the intersection?
Um, I, oh, that might be within 50 feet. I have to check it with the exact rule is.
I, I don't think you will be allowed. Yeah, can you please go through the DOT street tree requirements? I don't think you will be allowed to provide that new street tree right at the corner on 51st Street and nor would you be allowed on Queens Boulevard?
Right, yeah, okay, so I'll double-check the requirements. I think it's, yeah, I'll double-check what the requirement is and adjust accordingly.
Okay.
And I think that was all, that was all the comments.
Okay. Um, and so I have a said handicap vehicle parks there and then they will have enough space to maneuver and go out. Okay, and those are boulevards, okay. Can you just extend the striped area of the pedestrian walkway along the building very clearly?
Yeah, sure.
But also extend it by striping it?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Gupta? And also make it very clear that there's not going to be any more auto repair use.
Yes, we're getting rid of the auto repair shop.
Yeah, all right. So I, the, this, the concrete space that's behind the building now, how would you access? Is it accessible from the building?
No, it won't be accessible. Basically, we thought about putting planting there, but because they would be between two sets of walls, it, it wouldn't survive. And we don't want it to be used for like trash storage or anything. So that's why we're proposing putting trees on the top and the bottom, so that way there's no access there.
Okay, just, just figure out a way to keep it clean as debris fly around and they'll collect. So please note of that. Okay. Any other questions for, for Mr. Gupta, Commissioners? All right, let's go to the public then.
Okay, the case we are currently discussing is 12019299BZ 8201 to 8213 Queens Boulevard, Queens. Should you wish to discuss, please dial 6465588656 or a toll-free number 8884754499. At the prompt, you will enter the webinar ID number 81356510937 and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, press star nine to raise your hand. Star six two one mute if you are calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to discuss, please raise your Zoom hand. Once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Okay. How long will it take for you to make these corrections, Mr. Gupta?
I think two to three weeks should be fine.
Yeah, I think the earliest we can schedule this would be in June, June, please. And I'm assuming you will need to revise the canopy also if you're reducing the, your number of dispensers.
Right, we would, we would make the canopy a little bit smaller, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, okay. All right. Any other questions? Did we, did the time run out?
Time ran out. I don't see anyone raising their hands. There's no attendees in the waiting room?
Okay.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Gupta.
Thank you.
This concludes the public hearing for April 10th, 2023.
Thank you all.
Bye-bye.
See you tomorrow, bye.
See you tomorrow.